All right. The, uh, imocation will be given by, all right, Father?
Your heavenly Father, thank you for bringing us here together tonight. Please give us all willing to make good decisions of the county for things that senior will. It's west with all the loans that are sticking out. All these things we ask in your name. Amen.
Amen. The pledge will be given by Rocky Preston.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There's none. The roll call.
State and so. Go now more. We have sixteen prayers.
Now, uh, approval of the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The citizens forum. Nobody signed up. The commission forum. Go ahead, Rocky. I don't know what to push up here.
I've over time reassessed my values with law enforcement. My thoughts have somewhat changed over the past many months, listening to lots of conversation, lots of debate concerning the matter. I've come to decide more needs to be done by this commission for law enforcement. Dollars in this budget, the two thousand twenty-five budget we're about to vote on are available. It can be used for building up our county's law enforcement. We can be second to none of the surrounding counties, second to none of the surrounding cities. We just got to take the proper actions. The dollars are available. They're funded in two thousand twenty-five budget and these funds will reoccur next year and reoccur the next year. Let's not be the disadvantaged law enforcement community. If you commissioners are being told lack of resources for raises, it's just simply not true. Let's recondition our minds to assess, evaluate the subject before us. We must utilize available funds to recruit and keep the best law enforcement for the safety and securities of the citizens of Benton County. We're dealing with fentanyl. We're dealing with all of these activities that are plaguing our communities under our watch. And what are our actions? Our actions are no law enforcement raises in the two thousand and twenty-five budget. What signal are we sending? Instead of uplifting and encourage law enforcement with our actions of monetary rewards towards them, we stand still and watch them depart. Let's give the cost of living increase they deserve. Let's have a reduction in fear in Benton County. No raises? What kind of sting are we giving law enforcement? We're sucking optimism right out of them to have any hopes to stay in Benton County. Page sixty-eight of your fourth draft of your budget shows the school having page sixty-eight, fourth draft, shows the school having a fund balance of almost thirteen point one million dollars. Much of this school's fund balance comes from the local option sales tax. That's found on page fifty-two of the budget, fourth draft. A very large revenue for the schools being underestimated by budget for lots of years, for going way back. The dollars not accounted for or not estimated or included are received monthly by the school and not returned at the end of the year, but kept by the school, increasing the school's fund balance. In two thousand and twenty, the budget estimate was under actual dollars, four hundred and seven thousand dollars. Two thousand twenty-one, nine hundred and five thousand dollars. Two thousand and twenty-two, budget missed estimate on local option sales tax to the school, one point, one million, seven thousand, twenty-three, one million, one point one million or better. Two thousand twenty-four, this includes the first three quarters and that fourth caper, the fourth quarter average, five hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. And for the two thousand and twenty-five fiscal year, this is my estimate. We're gonna, if we don't do something, we're gonna miss it by eight hundred thousand dollars. The last five years, the average growing for the school's local options, seven sales tax, excuse me, is better than two hundred and eighty thousand dollars. We've got a chance, a more accurate estimate of school's local option and move school property taxes back to the general fund to pay for law enforcement or keep building the school's fund balance. Simple as that. Debt service. Debt service. In addition to providing debt service with nine hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars and better to cover the cost of five loans that are paid on twice a year each, uh, an additional five hundred and thirty-seven dollars, better than five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars above the cost of all the debt has been added to debt service. The words used was let's shore the debt service up. Well, it's short up. It's short up at, at a number of two point seven million dollars and that's without the new money. Moving this money to debt service, shrink the general fund overfunded budget to twenty-seven thousand dollars. Getting close. On the twenty-ninth, when voting for the two thousand twenty-five budget, I'm gonna make a motion to amend this budget. And that will be across the board, cost of living increase for all the sheriff deputies and jail workers. And I'll suggest a four percent cost of living increase, but that's debatable, that can be talked about. And I will have the wordage, the wordage, the documentation to support my motion to amend and it'll be provided by C task. In closing, let's don't just be followers, checkerboard commissioners that have a, uh, that's here for an advantage. We need to be service, critical thinking service and ability to question, to test previously hailed assumption, to examine, to evaluate, to make informed judgment. Thank you, Chairman. How you on the floor?
Mr. Hon. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to commend the budget committee. They've got a hard job. I've been to some of their meetings and, uh, listened to them and I commend the work that they do. It's a hard job to do that. And I have expressed the concern and about some things. And I want you to know, first of all, that I think everybody deserves the right. I think every employee deserves a rate of some amount, possibly with sheriff's department, courthouse, whatever. But in our budget, we have put in a, a minimum starting salary for the courthouse. Now, the way I understand it, we elected Kirk, we elected trustee, we elected tax assessor, and their job is to run that office. Their jobs are to minister that office, are who they, they think is the best employee and pay them what the salaries that they think they need to pay in order to get their job. We should put that in the budget. But the county, the budget committee wants to raise everybody's salary to a starting rate thirty thousand dollars, which means you're gonna have to bump other people up. Not saying they don't deserve a bump, but just doing some rough fevering. We've got taxpayers out here that getting a three percent cost of living increase in their taxes, I mean their income. And of course, Bidenomics is giving them seven percent inflation, so they're not coming out of heat. But we're giving, some of these raises are gonna be five to seven thousand dollar raises on their pay. It's gonna be hard for some of the taxpayers to sit there and think we're giving away either five thousand dollar raises or seven thousand dollar raises. I think that the office holders who are elected to run those offices should give us a budget. This is what we want. They say this is how much a raise we want to give our employees. Budget committee, that's county commission. Our job is to either approve that budget or, or cut that budget, whatever, but not tell them what they have to pay. By doing a minimum salary, you know, the mayor has somebody coming in to get into office. It's got five years experience. Maybe from a law, believe a law officer, maybe from another government agency. He's gotta start them off at the same amount as he would somebody come down from high school. You know, there's, you know, the person getting hired, they should have a probationary here. Where they start off at X amount of dollars an hour, then that office holder can give them a raise. Okay, then they got a spot where they top out. Sheriff, does your deputy have a top out rate right now? If they top out, insert them out, pay them out on the top out. One year to top out. So, I mean, they should be, uh, uh, office holders responsibility. I, I'm not a Michael manager or no thing. I'm not, my job is to tell Kenny how to spend his money or tell Roseanne or the mayor what to do there. I'm thinking by putting in a minimum raise, give them a raise of some type or bonus, but you're probably five to seven thousand dollar raises for, you know, single individuals. It'll be hard for some of the taxpayers to swallow it. That's just my opinion.
Any other commissioner? If not, uh, county mayor? No, I'm good. Thank you. You're good. Approval of the minutes? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Report of public utilities? Oh, what's your voice? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Let move us to line number seven. Approval of releasing the trustee of Benton County from the two thousand twenty-two tax aggregate of eight million, four hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty cents. Where's I see that motion? All right. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Yeah, I can see. If no discussion, please vote.
Mine says a resolution by Sheriff Kenny Christopher to then new policy. Is what my computer said.
Yeah, mine does too. I'm reading the wrong.
Up there it says one thing and down here it says another.
Mine does too. Mine just restarted also. Would you vote?
Yes.
Yes. Now, rev, resolution two? No. One. By Sheriff Kenny Christopher to present a new policy regarding holiday benefits for approval by the county commission. Uh, may take a minute. No, I didn't, because it wasn't. No. I've got a motion by Mr. Price and a second by Mr. Preston. Any discussion on this? Okay, I didn't. Mr. Fowler?
Receive holiday pay in sixty days. What, what does it? Well, I know the city goes six months for probation period. But this is set in sixty days of probation for you to receive holiday pay.
Working?
Is that what you're saying, Kenny? Uh, that, that is the prior, um, policy. That first whole page of the prior policy is in effect right now. So maybe you read it down after we've replaced the quality of assets. There's actually not a clause in here about how long you have to keep the party. Do you see your holiday pay? So that's something you do for the matter? What, what does the courthouse itself do as far as? As far as receiving holiday pay as probation?
I don't know.
I, I pulled this passage directly from the courthouse's policy and only changed a couple of words. So I don't believe the courthouse has policy regarding how long you have to be.
Thank you, good on the big one.
You may add an extra day, any?
Yes, there is an extra day and an additional day for holiday for adding fifteen.
Anything else? If not, let's vote. Ready for it? Yeah.
Yes.
Frank Lashley?
Yes.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries.
Right. Resolution two by Sheriff Kenny Christopher. The budget funds in the amount of one thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars received from various sources to proper line items for expenditures. I have a motion by Sonny Hall and a second by Phil Melton. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Craig Carter?
Yes.
Frank Lashley?
Yes.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries.
Resolution number three by Sheriff Kenny Christopher. The budget funds in the amount of five thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars and nineteen cents received from insurance payments on damaged sheriff department vehicles to an expenditure line item to allow for proper expenditures. I have a motion by Phil Melton and a second by Jerry Price. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Craig Carter?
Yes.
Frank Lashley?
Yes.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries.
Resolution number four by Sheriff Kenny Christopher. Seeking county commission approval to reallocate funds received from the American Rescue Plan Act grant for the purchase of a patrol car. Y'all need a minute, sir. Y'all need a minute to go to the next one. Resolution five by Benton County, uh, Mark Florence to adopt Benton County Board of Education federal project funds as an approved budget for separate projects within the fund and to resolve that to resolve that the commission will consider the adoption of this resolution on an annual basis. I have a motion by Phil Melton and a second by Jeff Murphy. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
Frank Lashley? You want to change your vote?
He shows us we voted on.
Whether registered or not.
I'm pretty ready for this.
Whether registered or not. All right. The resolution number six by Benton County Director of Schools, Mark Florence. The budget funds in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars received as reimbursement for state-paid parental leave from the state. Have a motion by Keith Arnold and a second by Phil Melton. Any discussion? If none, please vote.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries.
All right. Resolution number seven by Benton County Director of Schools, Mark Florence. The budget funds in the amount of two hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-three cents received from the state for the funding of a summer learning camp. I have a motion by Phil Melton and a second by Barry Holland. Any discussion? If not, please vote.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries.
Resolution number eight by Benton County Director of School, Mark Florence. To transfer funds in the amount of one thousand, one hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-four cents within the school budget. Have a motion by Marty Douglas and a second by Phil Melton. Any discussion? All in favor, please vote.
You want to change your vote? Sixteen years.
Resolution number nine by Mayor Mark Ward. To transfer funds in the amount of twenty-three hundred dollars from the county building line item to the circuit clerk's budget for the purchase of required secure filing cabinets for juvenile court records. Have a motion by Barry Holland and a second by Phil Melton. Any discussion? If none, please vote.
I didn't mean to hit that. Sorry.
Sonny Hall?
You want to change your vote? Motion carries.
That moves us to resolution number ten by Mayor Mark Ward. To move funds in the total amount of two thousand, four hundred and six dollars within the general fund to properly allocate funds for expenditures to complete the fiscal year. Have a motion by Marty Douglas and a second by the Wayne Fowler. Any discussion? If none, please vote.
None, please vote.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries.
Resolution number eleven by Mayor Mark Ward. To appropriate and budget funds in the amount of thirteen thousand, seventy-two dollars to the election commission budget to properly fund and a required reimbursable purchase of non-demand printers, on-demand printers, I'm sorry. I forgot my reading glasses. Oh, I'm good. Um, motion by Phil Melton and a second by Marty Douglas. Any discussion? If none, please vote.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries.
That moves us to resolution twelve by Sheriff Kenny, Kenny Christopher. To appropriate funds in the amount of twelve thousand dollars to cover a shortfall of funds within the maintenance and repair of vehicles line item. Have a motion by Jerry Price and a second by Deborah Bain. Any discussion? Mr. Price?
Yeah, um, Sheriff, would you lighten us on where we are as far as future costs for maintenance for the trade? Only a bit.
Any other discussion? If none, please vote.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries.
That moves us to rev, resolution thirteen by Sheriff Kenny Christopher. To appropriate funds in the amount of forty thousand dollars from the general fund to various line items within the jail budget to cover an expected shortfall of funds. Have a motion by Phil Melton and a second by Deborah Bain. Any discussion? If none, please vote.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries.
Yeah. Resolution number fourteen by Sheriff Kenny Christopher. To appropriate funds in the amount of five thousand, three hundred and eight dollars and sixty-nine cents to cover cost, cost associated with a change of Benton County Sheriff Department holiday policy. Have a motion by Deborah Bain and a second by Sonny Hall. Any discussion? Phil?
Uh, budget vote is not to recommend this because there is enough money in empty line items to cover this. It's not needed to cover, to cover this.
Anybody else? If none, please vote.
You may wish to change your vote? The motion by six years.
That moves us to resolution fifteen by Sheriff Kenny. by Sheriff Ken Christopher to appropriate funds in the amount of four thousand, two hundred and forty-eight dollars and four cents to cover costs associated with a change of the Benton County Sheriff- holiday- holiday policy. Okay, this is for the jail. Have a motion by Sonny Hall and a second by Deborah Bain. Any discussion? If none, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
That moves us to resolution sixteen by Sheriff Ken Christopher to appropriate funds in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars from the general fund to various line items within the jail budget to cover an expected shortfall of funds. Have a motion by Deborah Bain and a second by Sonny Hall. Any discussion?
What, what do you expect? For, I mean, do we not just pull it out of the general fund? Go over? Or what, what do we do? And then we always afford if you go over budget or something, pull it out. If that's one more month then, or we just put some money in there now?
Can I say?
Yes, sir.
So, uh, last month, I guess it was, can't remember what, was it last month or month before? They, they were getting low on funds. They'd spent about twenty thousand dollars and bought up food, but we put thirty, thirty, thirty-five thousand in there so they could buy it up for the next two months because they couldn't get a PO after the fifteenth. So, all that money was gone except five thousand dollars within the week. So, they ordered up and stocked up, but they brought this resolution and I let the sheriff speak to it because uh he says that he wants to buy up that much more now over these next forty-five days.
Talk about PO, are we supposed to get POs about stuff or?
Uh, I, I wouldn't give a PO if the money's not there. But I, but I would think after twenty thousand in April and, or uh the previous month and then thirty-five thousand in April. I would think you'd have enough to make it for two months, but I'm, I'm not the one that runs that, so you'll have to ask the sheriff.
I just want to know is, I know we always create a resolution because of shortfall. I mean, you know, we always got to pick out what was the loophole to make up for. But I just want to know, putting it in there now and do we pull POs to show where this money's going or what do we do to help keep track of that? Instead of pulling POs?
Yeah, we get a PO up and then we make a whole
You keep a spreadsheet on what's purchased and stuff like that.
Just right here. Get stew with nothing left. Get stew. And cover it to be pretty much fair.
So, we put the money in there, but you post request a PO, correct? So, the money's there. Do you still request a PO to pull your money out of that or you just turn the receipts or what y'all?
The PO.
I thought it was thirty-five thousand.
It was.
Chairman. Looking at the uh two thousand and twenty-five budget draft four, the audit number for food supplies at the jail in two thousand and twenty-three, audit number was a hundred, better than a hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars. That's that's substantially below the, above the uh estimate for the two-year following years.
Thank you. Anything further? If none, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote?
That moves us to resolution seventeen by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of ten thousand dollars to the medical examiner coroner's budget to properly fund required expenditures. Have a motion by Deborah Bain and a second by Phil Melton. Any discussion? If none, please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen yes.
That moves us to resolution eighteen by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of three thousand, eight hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-seven cents to the senior citizens budget to properly fund a payroll line item which was left short by the departure of the former director and the resulting payment of accrued vacation days. Have a motion by Phil Melton and a second by Keith Arnold. Any discussion? If not, please vote. That moves us to resolution nineteen by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate budget funds in the amount of thirty thousand dollars to properly fund the purchase of fuel for Reeseville at the Benton County Airport for the remainder of the fiscal year. Have a motion by Marty Douglas and a second by Phil Melton. Any discussion? Please vote.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen yes.
That moves us to resolution number twenty by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of one thousand, seven hundred dollars to properly fund the payment of the sales tax by the Benton County Airport for the remainder of the fiscal year. Have a motion by Phil Melton and a second by Jerry Price. Any discussion? If none, please vote. Resolution twenty-one by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate and budget funds the total amount of three thousand, two hundred dollars to the general fund to properly allocate funds for expenditures to complete the fiscal year. Have a motion by Deborah Bain and a second by Marty Douglas. Any discussion? If none, please vote. Resolution twenty-two by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of five thousand dollars for a reimbursable airport maintenance grant. Motion by Phil Melton and a second by Jerry Price. Any discussion? If you want to.
What this is, is uh, we always get a fifteen thousand dollar grant out there for maintenance at the airport and we got that this year, but the state came in, we had some cracks in the runway and they made us use that to seal those cracks. They're out there doing it right now. But since they made us use it on something that they normally do through a different grant, they went ahead and allocated five thousand more dollars for our regular maintenance and we just needed to get this in before the end of fiscal year so we can get it, the stuff purchased and get it done by June thirtieth. It will be reimbursed to us.
Any other discussion? If none, please vote. That moves us to appointing notaries. There's a list of them. I read them off before we get a motion. Nikki Lynn Davis, Jordan L. Ragsdale, Misty Lee Davis, Cheryl Lynn Calhoun, Melissa J. Smith, Christie Renee Perry, Catherine A. Oakley, Madeline Danielle Breeden, Carolyn R. Love, Daphne Fay, Kirchar, I'm sorry, Richard Isaac Goodwin, Melissa Stone, Pamela Lynn Marabella. Have a motion by Keith Arnold and a second by Sonny Hall. If, any discussion? If none, please vote. Oh, voice vote. All in favor, say aye. All opposed? Thank you. That moves us to any other business. I have a motion to suspend the rules. Do I have a second?
Suspend the rules for what?
For what?
For the It, it's suspending the rules for twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six. Have a motion and a second. Is this a voice vote? Please vote. Oh, I thought we had one. Pushy button.
Yeah, y'all pushy.
Motion by Deborah Bain and a second by Duane Fowler.
Now we vote. Mine won't go.
Sheriff, Duane, Jerry Price.
This goes back to other business. Couple things I wanted to clarify, uh, basic tasks. Cause I've got two items that I'd like to bring up.
Yeah, well. No, you will. Hang on just one second. Rules are suspended and not continued, Mr. Price.
Thank you very much, Chairman. Mr. Mayor, uh, I've got two things I'd like to bring up, get an update on. Um, the first one would be, um, IT bids for the jail. We still got some turned down or need to be fixed. Forty-two, discussion with the sheriff. Have we got any update on where we are with those bids on IT?
You have to ask the sheriff to do it.
Down with the, uh, I think running the papers really broken. We got to run in the paper for a couple of weeks and uh our jail inspector was down a few weeks ago and he's coming back till Friday and uh he told us then, y'all need to find us right soon. Come shut down on you and have like a problem.
Is this the one where he was gonna change out a lot of the computers and stuff? And we said that it was over ten thousand, so you had to do it.
And uh, we sent off the bid and they came and he was on the bill. Still be it, so have to run it again and paper, but we need to get this done. But we don't have an IT man now. We're using the one that we always use. Need to come down and fix a couple of things for us. Since then, uh, we just need to get done before something shuts down back there. When it's over, we'll see. But we just, we need to get the The jail inspector's trouble again, but he's trying and he's helping back Friday, so I think we'll tell him we're working on getting it fixed. And the second one, uh, Mr. Mayor, is an update on the uh, cloud watching property that we purchased. Where can we stand on all that?
Uh, we, we should close on that property in this, in the next thirty days.
Have, have we done a survey yet?
I don't know if we're doing a survey or not. I was leaving that up to the attorney, but at least the deed worked to get it in our name. If you think, if you think we need a survey, we can go ahead and include it right now.
I was gonna ask, we got on this, I was gonna ask, did we ever determine that we have a possibility of that? I never did know it.
I, I knew from the tax mail, but she knows
Three point one acres.
Three point one acre. But if you think we're planning on doing, building on it soon, we can go ahead and survey it, but I thought that we might just wait until we're actually going to because the construction company that does the stuff will do that.
They came in and meant with, um, a little bit of mistake because I was building jail, so you know, he come in and meant with this. And then I spoke with Bob Bass, over all this, Bob Bass that he had our figures for us, we're so young. Called him on the act and that kind of like, so I walked him in.
What, what I'm saying is instead of us spending the money out of the general fund for a survey, I thought if you're gonna be doing, doing building there, you'll have a contractor and it'll be covered under that grant. So, if it's alright with you, we'll wait about the survey and just get the property in our name. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Uh, believe that money was appropriated in the resolution for survey was the closing cost and survey was at
It is. It is.
So.
It's in there, but why do we spend it if it's gonna be covered with a grant? That was just my philosophy. We'll do whatever y'all wanna do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the resolution. Uh, resolution twenty-three by Benton County Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the amount of five hundred dollars received by the senior citizen, senior center from the proceeds from a yard sale to an appropriate line item to allow for proper expenditures. Have a motion by Phil Melton, a second by Marty Douglas. Any discussion? All in. If none, please vote.
Frank Lashley.
Yes.
Dan Miller.
Yeah.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen yes.
Resolution twenty-four by Sheriff Ken Christopher to move funds within the jail budget to address expected shortfalls within payroll line items. Motion by Sonny Hall, a second by Jerry Price. Any discussion? If none, please vote.
Frank Lashley.
Yes.
Frank Lashley.
Yes.
Anyone wish to change their vote? Motion carries sixteen yes.
Resolution twenty-five by Sheriff Ken Christopher to move funds within the sheriff's department budget to address expected shortfalls within the payroll line item. Have a motion by Jerry Price, a second by Sunny Hall. Any discussion? If none, please vote.
Rick Harder?
Yes.
Frank Ashly?
Yes.
You want me to change your vote? Motion carries sixteen yes.
Resolution twenty-six by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars for a reimbursable grant for the South Benton, North Decatur Sewer District. Have a motion by Phil Melton and a second by Deborah Bain. Any discussion? Go ahead.
So, uh, I was up at the Benton Decatur Sewer Meeting this past week, and they they have uh, three or four projects going there to expand and make the place better and all. You have to redo the manholes and make sure they're all sealed in the lines, and you have to do a lot of testing. Uh, they've already put that out for bids. We have grants for all that, but what's the problem is, is they paid over a hundred thousand dollars in engineering architect fees out of their funds before the grant is available. So, it's reimbursable, but the grant has to be kicked in, so they're running short of funds, and they ask if Benton County would give twenty-five thousand and Decatur County would give them twenty-five thousand to get through this spell until the grant opens. It'll be reimbursable to both counties as soon as they get their grant going, so I feel like it's something we need to do.
Any other discussion? If none, please vote.
Rick Harder?
Yes.
Frank Ashly?
Yeah.
You want me to change your vote? Motion carries sixteen yes.
Any other business? Go ahead, Jared.
I was wishing I didn't run into a bylaw, bump in the road about hard damage. Hard damage the other day, and then they called to see if I could get them into the police academy. Last year, uh, Toledo, the lady had and laying down tuition. So, they've got an overflow of people that everybody can throw them in there and see if it flows. Uh, so we can't do hard work now. I had one in my office, I told him I want to hire him, but I I can't tell him, I mean, I've been in the academy, we called in January, as soon as we can get anybody in, and he's getting there. Twelve weeks after that, that's it was probably that. So, what we would basically do is pay him salaries to come in here and train on the road, which is a long time to train. You could go about two months to get them, or about getting their academy. The only other way to get anybody in that I know is if we have to pay tuition to Cleveland State and Walton State, which was a lot of people do, until this, and when Toledo comes away from it, so long. So, I need to know if we can get the tuition. I don't know exactly what it is. I I think the last time we sent somebody like that and paid tuition at uh, at Toledo, when they were paying, I would say somewhere around six thousand or well about thirty-seven hundred dollars. When you go to these academies, you also have to pay their lodging because it's uh, it's just university tuition going there. If they are certified, just like they would be if they went to Toledo, we could probably get them in there and probably, but I need to know if we would do that because I've got one more to interview. If we hire them, let them ride, as we normally do, we put them in the jail for a month, not that side. You know, we put them out training on the street until which time we can get them into the academy. We figured we'd be able to get them in and use it within a few months, but now they tell us it's gonna be at least in February, coming now. That's just a long time to invest in somebody paying their salary. They're not really much good to us if they're probably certified where they can make it in. They can work by themselves, so.
It's gonna take them two months to get in, that's gonna push you into the new fiscal year. We simply have to do that as much as we can to cover the costs.
I just, I just want, I need to know if we are willing to pay that because Toledo, where we've been sending them, Toledo is gonna be so far out. Make a bigger effort in them to get up there and fail them. Uh, the last four we've sent, I would have been making two out. I've got a couple of bits. Toledo's got really overwhelmingly tough with, I would say, with that tough, they're just, they've got these crazy rules and stuff, and this generation now, it's not possible up there to put up with them.
Well, most of the way to track, once we're ready to pass and prove around the home cover, there'll be funds there.
Well, if I hire some people, but I got a horrible confidence, I will get them to work. And then we'll pay the tuition for Toledo or Cleveland, or Cleveland State or Walton State. That's our only relative option.
Then you see the higher you have to use the funds, unless the judge comes back and tells you, we're gonna be writing, uh, paying the tuition wherever it is.
We always had to pay them over the last two years, so since it's changed, I won't, I get back where I am. And that way, after the hell that went, I could put a word about it. With our now, let's get changed.
Question, Sheriff, is Walton State, Cleveland State, are they still playing with that, that they gave me?
Uh, and I was told in twelve weeks, and I was also told that they're ten weeks, because they go the next day every week as opposed to uh, Toledo now going in on Sunday night, on Thursday night, and I think they go up on Sunday night and come back Friday. I I think somewhere in there, Walton State wants to play that. I don't know what the exact cost is, but I was, I was given price of tuition, but I don't think that covers, because they have to stay on campus. They don't have to play on campus, they like it. Now, after about two more years, Toledo's going, process of building this multi-compact highway patrol, P W R, P B I, L U C, everybody, everyone.
Any, any other business?
Before we adjourn, Darrell, I want to uh, remind everybody and maybe invite you down to Big Sandy's uh, Spring Festival, forty-seventh annual Spring Festival that Big Sandy's beautiful champion puts on. Uh, Saturday's the big day, it starts early. It's uh, Saturday, it's great, ten o'clock, so there's entertainment all day long. We'd love to have you then. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
We will prove us money over for the maintenance stuff on ours, so can we, you know, we're in this next five weeks or we can't make money, can we go ahead and be open to that?
Yeah, Charlie can picture you.
I just want to make sure, so I can, five years of this college, that's all I need.
Anything further? Checking? Motion is second. All in favor say aye. We're adjourned.